Type it into the comments on Facebook or YouTube, and we'll get to as many as we can as time allows. We'll also ask candidates to limit their response during the Q and A to two minutes. All right, so that's more than enough housekeeping. So now it's my pleasure to introduce our moderator for today, Lee Anderson. Lee Anderson is probably a familiar face for most of you, as you've seen him nightly on KTV News Channel 21, where he's a news anchor. Lee has been with KTVZ since 1996, where he has been an anchor, producer, reporter, and news director. Lee is a graduate of Indiana State University, and we're excited to have him as our moderator this afternoon. And with that, I'll hand it over to Lee.
All right, thank you very much, Tyler. Remove the mask just for the sake of emceeing this event today. I want to welcome everyone again, and thank the Central Oregon Association of Realtors for putting on this series of candidate forums this fall. Today, we're going to be talking to candidates running for positions two and three on the Bend City Council. And today, we want to welcome the candidates for position two first. To my immediate right is Anthony Broadman, welcome, and also August Johnson. Okay, here's how this is going to work. First, I'm going to disclose that the Central Oregon Association of Realtors PAC has supported Anthony Broadman in this particular race. And then for position three, which will come up next, they have supported Chris Piper. Also, as a matter of full disclosure, I am no part of Central Oregon Association of Realtors, I've just been asked to moderate. With that, we did a coin toss to determine who will begin. For position two, we're going to begin with Anthony Broadman, and so without further ado, Anthony, you have two minutes to tell us who you are and why you're running for Bend City Council.
Thank you, Lee, I appreciate the opportunity. And thank you, Mr. Johnson, and thank you to the Central Oregon Association of Realtors for hosting this event. My name is Anthony Broadman, and I'm running for Bend City Council because I love this city, and as I've served the public my whole career, I want to serve our community. I've been a lawyer for tribal governments throughout the West, as well as businesses here in Bend, and I want to be a problem solver as we meet the challenges of growth ahead of us. We're a healthcare family, my wife is a pediatrician at Summit BMC, and we've raised three daughters here in Bend. And I've seen how tough it's been for families this year, especially families of essential workers and frontline workers. I've seen you not be able to hug your kids when you walk through the door because you're trying to keep them safe. I've seen the creases on your face from wearing masks all day, and I want to tell you that I see you and I believe in you, and I'm really proud of the work that we've done as a city to keep each other safe. I'm proud of the work ahead of us, we need to keep working to keep each other safe. But I know that this is going to make us stronger as a community. I know that this is going to better prepare us for the challenges ahead of us, like planning for growth. We have to have a connected, efficient transportation system. We need to address affordability of housing in a meaningful way, so that if you work in Bend, you can afford to live here. We need to make sure that the city is a dynamic and a responsive partner to businesses, small businesses, and workers, as we try to bounce back from the coronavirus. I am committed to not only making this an exceptional city for all of us here right now, but to making sure that the promise of this city is available to every single person in it, no matter your race, no matter what part of town you live in. I'm committed to working together to make sure that this is a wonderful place, not just for my three daughters, not just for our kids and our elders who are here right now, but for seven generations to come. Again, Anthony Broadman, I'm really honored to be here, thank you.
All right, thank you very much, Anthony. August Paul Johnson, you have two minutes to tell us who you are and why you want to be on the Bend City Council.
All right, thank you very much. My name is August Paul Johnson, I'm 18 years old, and as of today, actually, I have just become a freshman at OSU Cascades, a local college. I'm running for Bend City Council because of the structure that our founding fathers created back in 1776. They believed that all people are created equal, and that our government should allow those people to voice their opinions, and through politics, those people should be able to have an influence on the community and society that they live in. In the next four years that I'll be living here in Bend, and hopefully, as a city councillor, I have a vision. In my vision, I want to take Bend's growth and really push for the housing market, creating more houses in Bend to lower the cost of housing in Bend. With that push for growth, I also want businesses to pop up more, more local businesses as well, to allow people the job opportunities that they can receive when looking to just make some money. I believe that every person knows and understands what is best for them, and my belief centers around economic freedom. So that is the idea that you can use your money for what you want, when you want. And to get economic freedom, or to preserve economic freedom, you take the steps towards what's it called? The pursuit of happiness, basically. I believe that money can't buy you happiness or love, but money can give you the security to ensure that you can have that happiness that you want in your life. I hope that the people watching this will see both sides of the vision that Anthony and I want for Bend, and hopefully make a decision in this upcoming election season. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. August Paul Johnson, time for the questions now. Candidates, are you ready?
Yes, sir.
Anthony, we begin with you. Question number one. A $190 million transportation bond is headed to the ballot for Bend voters to decide in November. Do you support the bond? Why or why not?
I do support the bond. We have a Herculean effort ahead of us when it comes to transportation infrastructure in Bend. We need to ensure, and the bond does this, we need to ensure that there is safety, connectivity, and options for Bend as we continue to grow and we confront the growth that is here right now. I would say this starts with safety. The school district has identified dozens of places where it's simply not safe for our kids to get to and from school. That requires parents to drive their children to and from school. If we make transportation safer by investing in safe, low-stress transportation networks, it will then provide more options for people, not just kids, not just parents, but elders, people using wheelchairs, people driving, people using bikes, people using public transit. We need, and the bond does this also, we need to ensure that we are focused on connectivity. We have a geographic feature in our city, too, in the parkway and in the railroad, that present significant challenges when we are undertaking transportation planning. So the bond does a good start at improving east-west connections. But let's be honest, this is just a small part of the connectivity we're going to need to invest in over the next 20 years. We're going to need to ensure that not just Reed Market provides a workable, efficient connection, but that we look for how we are going to connect the Bend Central District, which is a critical component of planning for growth in Bend, to the east side of Bend and downtown. I think the bond is an excellent start, but it is certainly not a panacea, it's not a silver bullet to cure all of our transportation problems. It's going to require progressive, sustainable transportation planning if we are truly going to meet our goal in the transportation system plan of reducing vehicle miles traveled by four and a half percent over baseline. So I support it, I think it's a good start.
All right, Anthony Broadman, thank you. August Johnson, here, once again, I will repeat the question.
Okay.
A $190 million transportation bond is headed to the ballot for Bend voters in November. Do you support the bond? Why or why not?
I do support the bond. I believe that transportation within Bend is what allows people to connect with each other. As a college student, it grants me the ability to get to school on time safely as well. It gives, I guess, my classmates and my teachers that ability to do that as well. I agree with Anthony on a lot of points about the bond, such as the east and west connectivity that the bond will be, I guess, putting into place. I believe that Bend has a strange connection on the east and west, and it really doesn't need to be like that. I believe that Bend has a really good soul of its city, and to have more connections throughout it grants, I guess, a better, a greater future. Especially with expansion in the upcoming future, Bend needs to focus on safety, such as roundabouts. Roundabouts are an incredibly safe way to do a cross-intersection. And the way that, although, and the way that the bond, I guess, describes the safety features is excellent. I think that there are ways that people are concerned, depending on, like, the cost, what we'll pay for this bond, but I believe that Bend has a lot of diligent and smart experts on these sort of things that the council can look to and talk to about how we might want to cut back on maybe some funding, or finding other ways to get around issues that people are concerned about. But all in all, I do support the bond.
All right, very well. Ready for question number two, Anthony? Once again, we begin with you. Infrastructure is an important component of city operations, and especially critical for a growing city like Bend. If elected, what infrastructure projects would you prioritize for the city?
Well, I think it goes back to transportation, Lee. We are frankly behind where we need to be. We've seen substantial growth, and I don't think there's any indication that it's going to slow down. When I'm talking to voters, granted, it's a lot of time over Zoom and over the phone, the number one concern that I'm hearing, or one of the number one concerns I'm hearing, is growing congestion. The only way that we can really address this is by having more progressive transportation infrastructure in Bend to give people more choices about how they're going to get around. That means transit, that means better access for wheelchairs, that means more bike infrastructure. These aren't going to fix everything, we're going to have to make choices as a community. But when it comes to infrastructure, number one, I think the obvious thing we need to focus on is transportation. Thankfully, the bond is, like I said, a good start in doing that. I'll just use this opportunity because I also think that it's, it could be arguably infrastructure, that the city needs to lead on homelessness. This is a top-line concern for Bend voters right now. I'm hearing it from voters across the political spectrum, as somebody who wants to serve in a nonpartisan role, as a volunteer public servant. Bendites are extremely concerned that the city is not leading on homelessness. So from an infrastructure perspective, we need to focus as a region on a permanent winter shelter and funding that, so that we can use that as a centralized mechanism to help prevent homelessness before it starts, and to get people out of homelessness into situations that are more sustainable. Those are the, those are the infrastructure ideas that I would bring. I would also note that it's really important that we think, again, where are these infrastructure improvements going to take us in the next generation, the generation after that, and make sure that they are sustainable. Thanks.
All right, thank you, Anthony. Same question to you, August, I will repeat it. Infrastructure is an important component of city operations, and especially critical for a growing city like Bend. If elected, what infrastructure projects would you prioritize for the city?
I would prioritize the city allowing more commercial land use and land use towards the building of houses. I've heard a lot from people, well, actually, from all voters, it's one of the main things that people are worried about is the affordable housing that Bend has actually been running into. The housing is increasing quite a lot. I defer myself to moving to a house, I have to get five other friends, and we all have to work a nine-to-five job five times a week. It's really rough. I believe that expanding Bend in a safe way through the use of better roads, such as the, I guess, the road bond that we have coming up, safer roads allows for safer communities. But these communities need to be built on housing that is made for people who want to start a family. So not like duplexes or projects, I'm talking like houses that you have a backyard, someplace where your kids can run around. And in these communities, I would want businesses to pop up, whether that be local or national businesses, so that people can work towards getting jobs within those communities. If our infrastructure can work towards having a bend that supports families, then kids like myself, kids who are going to college, who are well-educated, can join the workforce, get a good job, and actually stay in Bend, providing, giving Bend a more educated workforce that better provides for its future.
All right, thank you very much. I think we've done a little bit of overlap when you hear question number three, but that's okay.
Probably.
We can expand on that, because I know it's a big issue. All right, Anthony, ready for question number three?
Yes, sir.
And this is a lengthy one.
Okay.
Housing supply is lacking in Bend and affordability remains a challenge. The city council set an aggressive goal of 3,000 housing units by the end of 2021 to help address the problem, and has passed some code changes and other policies to help get there. If elected, what new housing ideas and strategies would you bring to the council to help address the community's housing challenges?
Thanks, Lee. So I want to be clear, I think the city has done an exceptional job when it comes to traditional affordable housing. That is affordable housing in the 50% to 80% of area median income. What we need to do is focus on the people who are working in Bend and struggling to stay here. We need to focus on the missing middle, right? This means, I think, that we need to refocus the Affordable Housing Advisory Committee, who's done an exceptional job on traditional affordable housing, on that 80% to 120% of area median income. They've proven that they can do a good job when it comes to affordable housing, let's use the resources we have now to make sure that we're making everybody who, everybody who's working in Bend able to stay here, everybody who's working a job or two, able to afford to rent or buy in Bend. We also can surplus what little land we have left, from the city perspective, to show that these projects pencil, to show that for a developer, or a homeowner, or a renter, that these houses, which are a function of state law, homes under, for instance, House Bill 2001, which allows more units on a piece of property, that these are actually going to work, not just for the people who live, who are living in them, but for the neighbor surrounding. We need to make sure that neighborhoods are comfortable with these new types of housing. I think surplusing, again, there's not a lot of land out there left to do this with, but it's an opportunity. And finally, we need to recalibrate or make more dynamic, more efficient, our SDC program, our system development charges, the amounts of money that the city is charging to develop housing. Let's make sure that it makes sense, and it is a rational approach to development, so that we can incentivize the types of housing that people in Bend want and need.
Anthony, thank you. August, once again, I will repeat this lengthy question for you.
All right.
Housing supply is lacking in Bend, and affordability remains a challenge. The city council set an aggressive goal of 3,000 housing units by the end of 2021 to help address the problem, and has passed some code changes and other policies to help get there. If elected, what new housing ideas and strategies would you bring to the city council to help address the community's housing challenges?
So Bend's housing market abides by the same rules as any market, basically. It abides by the rules of supply and demand. In Bend, we have a low supply of housing, but we have many people moving here demanding or wanting to buy or rent housing, which spikes the prices high up. So I believe that as a city councillor, I would push to expand Bend's urban growth boundary, although people don't necessarily like the word expand, expansion, it's like 50/50 to me, but I believe that making houses cheaper is better than having a high-density bend. I've got to think a little bit. I would like to expand Bend towards the east, eastward, because westward expansion does push into more of our old-growth trees, which I have been reading on the, basically, the destruction of the growth trees that the city has actually been doing recently. In a couple of building projects, they, builders don't have a code that says, hey, you can't destroy, you can't destroy this many old-growth trees, you have to keep this many trees in line, and you have to build around those. So I would like to implement a code that keeps our trees, so that it keeps the character of Bend in line with what we all know and love as Bend.
All right. Gentlemen, thank you, that's all the questions. We're going to now ask if you have not done so, all the folks out there in TV land, or Facebook land, and YouTube land, if you would like to send in some questions. And you can also submit questions to position number three, although you have not seen those candidates yet, but we'll welcome those questions. And we'll take a brief moment here until we get some of those questions, and we get them up on the screen, so, gentlemen, relax for a moment, and then we'll get some audience participation going.
Thanks, Lee.
Okay, seems like we're doing a little bit more on housing now.
Yeah.
For this one, would you like to swap? August, would you like to take this question first?
Yeah, should I read out the question?
No, I can read it for you.
Okay.
Can you both see that?
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right. All right, here's an audience question. Opposition from neighbors is not uncommon when affordable housing projects are proposed in Bend, but we have an affordable housing crisis. How can Bend support neighborhoods while also increasing the supply of affordable housing? August?
I can basically go back to what I mentioned about affordable housing, is that we have to increase the supply of housing in Bend by increase, by growing Bend through our urban growth boundary. If we do that, then not only will you see, you'll see houses all throughout Bend, their prices dropping, as long as we push to increase that supply, instead of bringing in projects that, that you'll see, well, that aren't fully supported by neighborhoods, increase the supply of housing, that's all I have to say.
All right.
Yeah, I think, I mean, this is a function of governing, city governance, you have to come up with solutions that sometimes not everybody is happy with. In this particular instance, I think a lot of it means listening and hearing the actual concerns, and if they can be addressed through working with developers and neighbors to come up with a solution that works for the most people while still addressing the existential problem of our time in Bend, which is, you know, working people being able to afford to buy a home here, or rent a home even, then, you know, I think that that's part of being a community. So I see the role of city council as listening and doing everything we can to make sure that all stakeholders understand why it's so important to have affordable housing. I have the good fortune of living near a beautiful affordable housing development, it's probably five years old, and I think it brings exactly what I want to my neighborhood. It brings people who my kids can play with, and different neighbors who maybe I wouldn't live there if there wasn't an affordable housing development. So I think there's a lot of value, I don't like that we look at these as a problem, I think we should look at affordable housing and diverse neighborhoods, including corner stores, and parks, and affordable housing as part of the fabric of what we all love about Bend, and a huge part of that is our vibrant neighbors and our vibrant neighborhoods. So I think it's just going to take work and working together.
All right, very good. We have another audience question? Ah, we do. All right, August, you ready for this one? I'll read it to you.
Yeah, sure.
What is the city's role in promoting diversity, equity, and inclusion in the local government process?
I believe that the city's role in, I'll sum it up as the word inclusion, is just allowing people the opportunity to be involved with the government process, such as polling people. I believe that the city has the ability and the time to reach out to its citizens and ask questions about what changes they want to see in their community. And the citizens have the right to not answer to those polls. I believe that the city has certain, a certain structure to where they shouldn't actually go further. The city should work on infrastructure, and sewers, and police, and firefighters, but when it comes to something more social, the city, personally, all they can do is reach out and ask, and see, and, well, and ask the people who are specialized in certain fields, certain social fields, maybe at like our local college, and see if there is a sort of a middle ground to where the council can take what the city can do and apply it to the social problems that Bend has as of now.
All right, thank you very much. Anthony?
Well, I 100% support the council's move to give a mandate to the Human Rights and Equity Commission to make Bend a more just place. That is the obligation at every level of government in this country, it is part of being an American, that we are honoring our diversity, honoring our equity, honoring inclusion, and making our nation and our city and our state stronger by involving more people. I was fortunate enough to make a proposal with Councillor Campbell regarding providing childcare during committee meetings and council meetings. We need to do more, we need to go out into the community as a council and meet with different organizations, not the same people like me who attend every city council meeting. You know, I had the good fortune of spearheading the effort to open streets for restaurants to use downtown and other businesses, but if you don't have somebody sitting in a city council meeting, like me, then you don't know what initiatives we need to undertake. That's true for DEI, but it's true for everything. We need to ensure, as a country at every level, that we are making our communities more just. The Human Rights and Equity Commission is a very good start to that. It is 100% the obligation of the city of Bend to ensure that its practices are honoring our diversity, lifting up voices that are, have been marginalized in our city and in our country, and actively taking steps to make Bend a just and exceptional place to live. It's part of economic equality, it's part of making sure that this is a great place to own a business, it's part of making sure that this is a great place to raise your kids. Our diversity is our strength, and I truly believe we need to work harder at that at every level of government.
Gentlemen, thank you very much. August Johnson?
Yeah.
Anthony Broadman?
Broadman.
Broadman?
Yeah.
Sorry about that.
It's okay.
Did I say that before, too?
No, that was your first time, it was a good run.
Oh, it was your first time, yeah, I should read that. Thank you very much, gentlemen, you both did a great job, and I'm now going to ask you to please go and have a seat and enjoy the candidates for position number three. We'll take a short break while they come up, and we sanitize the area.
Thank you, Lee.
Yeah, thank you.
Some of those areas that we can work on is expanding the urban growth boundary. We can look at exclusive farm use zones, which right now don't yield a high value, and we need to revisit those. Right now, some of those EFUs have been rated a number eight, and that scale on a number eight means it's difficult to even farm or raise anything, even in wet or dry conditions. We also have the opportunity to look at House Bill 2001, House Bill 4212, which is an area that we're now able to look at bringing on encampments for homeless. One that is right now being driven forward is the veterans. And then we also have the House Bill 3450, which now has allowed Ben to adopt changes to our comprehensive plan and land use, up to 40 acres of land zone for employment. So we have many solutions that are available to us. But we also must work with our community developers, developers and our businesses here to make sure that when they're building community development, that they are having that percentage for affordable housing. And we also must focus on those workforce so that employers can retain their employees and those employees can live here.
All right. Thank you very much. Megan, ready for this? I'll read it again.
Yeah, thank you.
It's kind of lengthy. Housing supply is lacking in Bend and affordability remains a challenge. The city council set an aggressive goal of 3,000 housing units by the end of 2021 to help address the problem and has passed some code changes and other policies to help get there. If elected, what new housing ideas and strategies would you bring to the council to help address the community's housing challenges?
Great, thank you. I think that affordability and meeting this housing need is, it's such an important issue right now. This pandemic, in fact, has not slowed down growth at all. It seems like it's actually increasing growth. And we are in danger right now of becoming a rich-poor town, and we need to ensure that everyone has the option not only to work here and to recreate here and to eat here, but also to sleep here as well. I think that the Affordable Housing Committee is doing a really great job reaching our lower-income neighbors, but we need to fill in the gaps. And right now, one gap that I see is this, our middle-class working families. These are our cops, our nurses and our teachers, and they are essential to our community, and they can't find a place to live. They are squeezed from above and below. You know, home prices above are out of reach, and much of the affordable housing below is not in their income level. And so a couple of things can help. You know, one is working with the Affordable Housing Committee to expand its reach to that income level. Another is embracing the code revisions from the state. You know, this HB 2001 takes exclusionary, single-family residential zones, and it allows duplexes and triplexes and cottages on them. The more different types of housing that we have, the more we make it possible for first-time homeownership, buying into the market and expanded rental stock. The other gap is the near-houseless population, and I think we really need to embrace alternate housing options like microunits and tiny homes for this population. Many of our houseless population have jobs, but they can't afford rent as it stands, and they certainly can't get a mortgage. So this would be one way to really engage in a housing-first model. Secondly, we can't build 3,000 units and keep up with growth. It doesn't make sense to build these new forms of housing like cottages and microunits. So we need to reevaluate the SDCs to incentivize development of smaller properties. Fees should be in proportion to valuation and size. And finally, I think we need to make sure that the city council is doing everything that it can to streamline the process of building homes in our community. We need to simplify the code, zoning and permitting process, and find land that is ready for development. We also need to think creatively about infill so that we can utilize existing land and development. It has the benefit of making a more beautiful community and creating more homes.
All right. Thank you, Megan. Rondo, same question, I'll repeat it again. Housing supply is lacking in Bend and affordability remains a challenge. The city council set an aggressive goal of 3,000 housing units by the end of 2021 to help address the problem and has passed some code changes and other policies to help get there. If elected, what new housing ideas and strategies would you bring to the council to help address the community's housing challenges?
Thank you, Lee. Growth for the sake of growth is the philosophy of a cancer cell. So let's just talk why we're talking about housing, people who don't live here, when we completely ignore the people that have lived here and have devoted themselves to their home here, to their jobs, or the system that has rejected them and put them on the street. The continuous level of prosperity that the city, the continuous level of prosperity that the city has continued to experience this last four or five years has been top-down, except it hasn't been going all the way down. We are a homeless-making machine here, and the real estate industry in this town has their hand on the crank. Let's talk about the corruption that leads to this thinking that just does not allow for a conversation that is targeting equity for the people and prosperity for the people who already live here. Let's talk about the undemocratic process and the lack of transparency in that process where our city councillor Piper was chosen two years ago. He had no experience. I don't think he ever showed up at a city council meeting before that application process. I, on the other hand, have showed up at city council meetings and other public meetings for thousands of hours. We need somebody that is dedicated to hearing the whole community and serving the whole community without being clouded by, was it $35,000 now, councillor Piper, that you've already received from various organizations, including the host of this event today. The fact of the matter is, I don't have enough time to finish my next thought. Thank you very much.
All right. Councillor Piper would like one minute to clarify or rebut.
Yes, I will say that prior to coming on council, I wasn't as actively involved as Rondo. But I will say that there's many people in the community like myself that have been actively involved in other ways. We've actively, as a family, been involved in the schools. I brought the Medal of Honor Character Development Trait Program into Ben Lepine High and into High Desert because I felt that character development was important for our kids and our students. And the other thing, as an Eagle Scout, I serve and I'm always serving in volunteer and community roles, even though that sometimes it's not directly with a city committee in ways it has relationship to the city. So we, as councillors or prospective councillors, have served in so many different ways that allow us to come into a council position and begin to bring in and advocate on those individuals that we have worked with, those individuals that we have listened to, those individuals that we have stayed engaged with, so that their voices could be heard. And as a public servant, that's what I will continue to do on behalf of Bend and the residents here, is to continue to serve and act and engage.
All right. Thank you, sir. Megan, would you like a minute too?
Sure.
All right. Okay. Ready for question number three? Infrastructure is an important component of city operations and especially critical for a growing city like Bend. If elected, what infrastructure projects would you prioritize for the city? Chris?
Well, first and foremost, it's the transportation bond that's before us on November 3rd. I voted in support of bringing the transportation bond to the voters on November 3rd. This is a desperately needed bond. It is a $190 million bond, and as councillors, we decided to have that bond kick in in 2022 so it would be less economically, have a less economic impact on the residents of Bend. But as I mentioned before, I voted because by listening and understanding what our community is interested in, what our needs are, where our priorities are, congestion is number one. We have been in a situation, and another reason why I came on to council and applied and was appointed, is because I felt that we were going backwards, that we were doing patchwork. And now with the transportation bond as an infrastructure project, we have an opportunity to take those patches and now create connectivity. Safe routes to school, better pedestrian and bike routes, better roads going east and west, creating different behavioral changes in how people drive east and west to minimize congestion. We have so many different opportunities now ahead of us, if that transportation bond goes, to help with affordable housing. So there are many things that trickle from that bond that will create a very positive impact going forward for the city of Bend. The other is the area of homelessness. You know, that is an infrastructure area as well. I mentioned before, House Bill 4212. This allows local government to approve places of land in the area for development for emergency shelters. I feel that we have not done enough to find a warming shelter for the homeless, not done enough to create transitional housing for those that want to transition and come back into the workforce. So I believe that transportation and warming shelter and homelessness is critically important as we move forward.
Thank you, sir. Time's up. Megan. Infrastructure is an important component of city operations and especially critical for a growing city like Bend. If elected, what infrastructure projects would you prioritize for the city?
Thank you. You know, I think we have a system right now that no one is really happy with. You know, if you drive a car, you're, you know, talk about congestion. If you are a biker or a pedestrian, you talk about missing sidewalks or lack of safe paths to commute. And I think that we are all worried about safety. You know, I worry about safety all the time with my kids when they're biking around town. So just to, I wanted to talk about the bond later, but I wanted to just kind of hit on two other things. One thing that I really want to talk about is, I'm really happy that all transportation projects are going to be looked at with an equity lens now, because something I don't think that we think about often is that there are communities that are often really disproportionately affected by these, by these transportation projects, with, with missing sidewalks, with roads, you know, literally running through their neighborhood. So I was really happy to see that that's something that the city is going to be doing moving forward. I also think that another really important part of our infrastructure right now is the lack of childcare for our youngest population. You know, working parents deserve a safe and nurturing place to have their young children. You know, there are huge gaps right now in childcare options. I've struggled with my toddler to find a place to send him, and I'm not under financial strain. It was one in three before COVID, and so I can't even imagine how, how much worse it's getting. You know, a lot of the money that communities received, CARES funding, et cetera, were for school-aged children. And, you know, most of the parks and recreation, childcare is for kids five and older. And so, you know, I know that the chamber is working really hard on this with their childcare accelerator position, but our city needs to get involved too, because it's an issue for all of us. If people can't find a place for their little ones, they can't work and contribute to our economy. And so we need to partner together and get creative. I think that we can work with developers to talk about carving out childcare spaces and new developments. I think we can work with COIC, we can work with businesses, we can work with the chamber, but I feel that the city really needs to take action on this.
Perfectly on time.
No, that was amazing.
Rondo. Infrastructure is an important component of city operations and especially critical for a growing city like Bend. If elected, what infrastructure projects would you prioritize for the city?
Thank you, Lee. Before I continue into that infrastructure question, I do want to tail Megan here a little bit on that subject of supporting not only single parents, but our businesses. A lot of times when we think about childcare, we think about the parents or the family situation, but we're not actually translating that to businesses. It's just as important for our businesses, and our business owners know this. So we must put aside our distaste for the word socialism and come up with working solutions for our families and our businesses. Enough of that at the moment. Back to infrastructure. Again, I will contest the idea that we need to feed this growth by creating homes for people who aren't here yet, or that people come here with jobs, which has been happening for the last four years. If you don't understand what's been happening, people have been hired outside of our city by the city of Bend, by a lot of up-and-coming businesses, and they're not finding the base of employees that they need to get the job done, so they're going outside. And that's what's bringing a lot of really good people to our Bend, and I welcome them. And I welcome you who have been here, the maybe 10,000 or 15,000 of you who've just been here since the last election, since our last city council election. We need our city council to look at things with equity in mind, prosperity for all. The thought that we're continuing to have this conversation about new housing for people who haven't, if I can say, earned your place here yet, there's a lot of people who have paid the price and have been dealt with unfairly and had a lot of unfair circumstances, landed them on the street, and they're still here. They're not leaving. Thank you.
Chris Piper, one minute.
Yeah, thank you. I'd like to expand on, on, on the infrastructure, just to bring more education to those viewers. When, when, when on council, we have these opportunities to review developments, there is developments going on all around us. It's, it's, it's important to note that when these developments come online, or even before they come online, they are scrutinized. And as, as a councillor, we look at that, and we want to make sure that developments are balanced. We have large developments that are going on in northeast right now at Deschutes Market Road and Butler Market Road, a community development called Petrosa. This is a development that is actually going to incorporate location for childcare, location for affordable housing. So to create mixed-use communities is really important going forward, and I just want to, you know, comment and support what Rondo and what Megan have said in those areas, but bring light to the fact that as this city grows, this is what we're, what we're moving forward to, and I'm happy to say that I was out at this development this morning, and it's incredible to see the growth and the development and the planning that's going on with the inefficiencies that are happening now, so.
All right. Rondo said he'd like to have one minute.
Thank you, Lee. Because this subject was touched, touched on, and it is an infrastructure issue, transportation versus transit. Just want to hit the first button on this before we move on. I'm sure the question will be asked. We need to end Hawthorne Station, take it out of that neighborhood. That neighborhood has suffered too much, and quite frankly, our community has suffered by not having the right level of service that we should have from a bus station in our town.
All right. Candidates, thank you very much. Chris Piper, Megan Perkins, Rondo. Right now, we're going to see if we've got any audience questions. So we'll take just a moment here to pull those up. Once again, these are the candidates for position number three, Bend City Council. Earlier, you heard from the position number two candidates, and here's, here's our first question. Ah, here it is. Can everyone see that? All right. I will read it to you as well. Okay. This time, we're going to go in reverse order. Rondo, you get to go first on this one. How will you address the high cost of SDCs and housing impact reports for affordable housing? Also, the planning process is very time-consuming. How will you expedite that process?
Thank you, Lee. Our system development charges are the core of our economic planning for this city, and I don't think we need to mess with it. Matter of fact, we need to stop messing with the messing that we've already been doing. I know that sometimes we make exceptions for affordable housing. I think that's where I would maybe draw the line. There's always going to be an exception. As far as expediting the process, I know our friends and planners at City Hall do an excellent job, especially under the gun as they are in a continually growing city, as Megan said, curiously during this pandemic. That's all I'll say right now.
All right. Thank you very much. Megan, it's your turn, and once again, I'll read this. How will you address the high cost of SDCs and housing impact reports for affordable housing? Also, the planning process is very time-consuming. How will you expedite that process?
Yeah, as I, as I said before, you know, I think absolutely that we need to reevaluate our SDC process. If, if we're not incentivizing, you know, builders and developers to build different forms of housing, you know, affordable housing, microunits, tiny homes, cottages, then they won't get built. If it costs the same, the SDC costs the same for a 6,000-square-foot house and an 800-square-foot house, you know, it's, that's not going to have an impact on, a positive impact on our housing supply. I also think that we need to look at development fees as well and make sure that they're, you know, that the valuation is in, is in line there as well. And again, I would just like to, to, to reiterate that it's so important that we, as a city council, that we would streamline the process as much as possible, making sure that the code, that the zoning, that all of that is, is, is made as easy as possible for people to build houses that can house our working families.
All right. Ready? You want me to read this?
I got it up there.
You got it up there.
I got it up there. Thank you, Lee, though. Appreciate it. I do feel that we need to revisit our SDCs and have them come in line with, especially now with the, the multiple different housing options that are coming online through the different house bills that I reiterated. You know, one great example, Megan brought it up, is, is the microunits. Microunits is a great, is a great solution. I think that's, that's an option that, that, that we definitely need to move forward with, but if it is truly going to be affordable housing, the SDCs have to be in line with that specific development, just like they are with apartments and duplexes. So it's really important that, that we follow through on that and so that they are affordable. We're just not going to bring them online to bring them online and say we brought on more housing. They've got to be in that affordable area. So those SDCs definitely need to be reviewed, and that is actually an objective of mine if I move forward as, as, as your councillor again. In terms of streamlining, I've already been working very closely as a councillor internally with planning and our permitting process. Our city staff and the planning department and permit department have been working furiously, nonstop, in bringing on a new platform called Leap. Leap will actually help create a better process, better efficiencies, because what I've learned in talking with builders, developers and so forth, that they get down, they get down so far with the building, and then all of a sudden, something comes back and it's another $150,000 or another $200,000, $200,000. Those things can be corrected. They need to be corrected, because if they're not corrected, that permitting process can actually create higher costs going into that development. So we need to actually really streamline that, and, and that Leap software platform will definitely help us do that, and I'm looking forward to that coming online quite soon. And we've been doing some pilot programs already with that, so, thank you.
All right. Very good. Ready for a second question from our, from our audience? Here it is. How should the city council support Black, Indigenous and people of color in our community who feel unsafe or unwelcome in our town? Rondo?
Thank you, Lee. This is a great question, and it, for respect to everyone listening here, this question doesn't necessarily have to be about race, or at least the solution doesn't have to be about race specifically. When I moved here 30 years ago from Los Angeles, I'll tell you, I, I was a little disappointed that my Black and Mexican friends weren't in sight and that there was obvious discrimination and attitudes that weren't really welcoming. But of course, we can just read our Oregon Constitution, and even though it's not enforced, there's still some stuff in there that's not, does not make for happy. So going on from that, let's just say, let's go back for six or seven weeks on a Wednesday night when we were visited by Border Patrol and ICE. Let's just cut the chase. Their presence here was illegal. A lot of my friends, a lot of my conservative friends are always telling, reminding me, us, that we're a nation of laws, and I'm all good for that. We are maybe not a sanctuary city with quotation marks on it. We are a sanctuary county, and we are a sanctuary state, and we are welcome in the city, and we have a lot of really good people of all kinds of colors and sizes and beliefs. And at any time, they should all feel safe. And when I see a picture of our police department standing there next to the feds, next to the protesters, I wonder, who are they backing? Who do they work for? So we need a city council, we need a mayor that will say, you don't come to our city, you don't come to our home unless you ask. You don't tell us anything. This is our home. We're not going to ask, we're going to demand it. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Rondo. Megan, how should the city council support Black, Indigenous and people of color in our community who feel unsafe and unwelcome in our town?
I'd like to start by saying Breonna Taylor's name today. A, the verdict came out in Breonna Taylor's case, and there was no charge of murder, and the only charge was for shooting into somebody else's apartment. And there are people gathering at Peace Corner right now to talk about this incredible injustice that is happening all over our country. You know, when I started doing this work with Embrace Bend, I was really shocked that, you know, there were so many people in this town that didn't feel that they were a part of this city. And that's not okay. That's not okay that, that is the city that we have right now. You know, one day, my son was at the park and out of the blue got called the N-word and got pushed by another teenager. That is not okay, and we really need to wake up as a city and understand what's happening here. We have to understand why people are angry and why people feel unwelcome in our city. And there's a lot of things that the city council can do about it. Number one, they can be leaders, right? They can be, they are the megaphone for the city. They can set a vision that says everybody is included in decision-making. We want, we, going to people and not expecting them to come to us, okay? These are things that, that the city council can do. We also need to make sure that hiring, the committee process, that when, when people apply for the committees in our town, learned experience should be a part of that application. It shouldn't have to be that you have a certain resume. Learned experience should be a part of that. We need to do more than just listen. We need to take in what's coming at us, even if it's something that makes us feel uncomfortable, and even if it's something that calls us out, right? I have been called out a lot in this work, and I needed to be called out a lot in this work, because I need to keep learning as a white person of privilege in this community. The Human Rights and Equity Commission is a really great start, and I hope that, as it shepherds through, that it has real, strong authority in our community and--
Thank you, Megan. Time's up. Rondo?
Chris.
Yeah, Chris, I'm sorry.
No worries, Lee. No worries.
We're going backwards now. Okay. Once again, how should the city council support Black, Indigenous and people of color in our community who feel unsafe or unwelcome in our town?
Yeah, thank you. Another reason why I, I applied to come on council during the vacancy is because I, as, as what Megan stated too, felt that our city and our council was not doing enough to get out behind that dais, to get engaged in the community, to listen. I think listening is important, because if you're not listening, you're not learning and you're not understanding. October 19th, I published a piece in The Bulletin about listening and learning. That was October 2019. And today, I still follow and practice that. And as a result of that, six months ago, we brought on and partnered with Allyship. I went through diversity, equity and inclusion training, and out of that, the goal was to create the Human Rights Equity Commission, which is what council has voted on now to move forward to bring back staff recommendations on how that committee will be put together. This is such an important piece for this city. Our population in this city is growing. Our population, because of growth, is diversifying. We are hearing voices from Mecca, we are hearing voices from COBLA, we are hearing voices from Latinx. We need to continue to listen, we need to begin to create more inclusivity and equity for all. Everything that we talked about, affordable housing, transportation, infrastructure, all needs to have inclusivity as part of the subject matter. Recently, at a Wednesday night council meeting, we were talking about neighborhood associations. We were talking about land use permitting, zone permitting signs, and that sign was up on the slide. And I, I always cringe when I, I wait, I just wait to hear, and I don't, and I look at that sign, I go, what's the bilingual option? What's the bilingual option for that sign? And the response was, oh, we didn't think about that. We have to constantly remind ourselves and our city staff and our councillors that we have to have bilingual options.
All right. Thank you very much. That concludes the panel discussion for position number three now. We want to thank all of the candidates today for position number two, Anthony Broadman and August Paul Johnson, candidates for position number three, Chris Piper, Megan Perkins and Rondo. Outstanding answers to all the questions today, I thought, from all the candidates, and I can tell there's a, there's great passion for our city, and it's well appreciated from this desk right here. A reminder, we will be back with you again next Monday at noon for our next candidate forum, and that's a two-hour forum, because we're going to have the race for Redmond Mayor-- forum, and that's a two-hour forum, because we're going to have the race for Redmond Mayor, we're also going to have the race for Redmond City Council as well. We're going to come, pack all those in in a two-hour period, and also, we want to thank all of the folks who, who are helping to put this on today. Our producer is Tyler Neese from Central Oregon Association of Realtors, and of course, our director, Kevin Reichel and his crew, they do a great job for us. Once again, I'm Lee Anderson from News Channel Twenty-One, and we'll see you again Monday at noon.